Good evening. Welcome to the debate for issue 38 between Representatives of Cleveland City Council and the People's Budget Cleveland. My name is Carrie Kofor. I am the moderator and timekeeper for tonight. I am the Chair of the Cleveland District of the Ohio Speech and Debate Association. I am the Head Coach of Rhodes High School Speech and Debate Team and the Assistant Coach of Hathaway Brown's Speech and Debate Team. I have been a Cleveland Metropolitan School District teacher for the last 25 years and a staff member at the Rhodes School of Environmental Studies for seven years. The purpose of this debate is to bring both sides of issue 38 to the people of Cleveland so that they can make an informed decision at the ballot box on November 7th. We are using a modified format of a public forum debate for tonight's event. The handout which we provided explains the format, defines the terms, and delineates the time limits. This particular style of debate is designed to bring important public issues to debate and to allow for diverse voices to be heard in a public forum. The resolution for tonight's debate is resolved. The benefits of an enactment of participatory budgeting in Cleveland outweigh the potential harms. Each team will have four minutes of preparation time to prepare for speeches. The Representatives for People's Budget Cleveland will present the affirmative case. The debaters are Alina Starks and Jonathan Welly. Alina Starks is a member of the People's Budget Petition Committee and works as the Ohio Political Director for Working Families Party. Alina has spent the last decade building trust and growing relationships throughout Ohio as she advocates for working-class families. As a community organizer for racial, social, and economic justice, she has worked alongside progressive organizations and candidates to fight for many, for the many if not the few. Jonathan Welly is a member of the People's Budget Petition Committee and works as the Executive Director of Cleveland Owns, a nonprofit that builds cooperative businesses and fights for economic democracy in the public and private sectors. He served in the Peace Corps and worked on President Obama's 2012 reelection campaign in Cleveland before getting a Master's in Public Policy and moving back to Cleveland in 2015. He is a member of Elizabeth Baptist Church in Slavic Village and lives in Ohio City, where he is a member of the Cleveland Catholic Worker. Cleveland City Council will give the negative case. The debaters are Robin Kaltenbach is a resident of Old Brooklyn and has spent several decades as a leader in the nonprofit sector. In addition, being Glass Roots Organizer and informal STEM educator, Robin volunteers as an advocate for health equity. Robin has a Bachelor's of Science from the Ohio State University, Go Bucks, and Master's Degree in Communications from Ohio University. Chris Harsh is the City Councilman for Ward 13, which encompasses most of Old Brooklyn and part of the Stockyards. He lives with his wife Elizabeth and their three children, and they have a dog named We ask the audience for courtesy, consideration, and patience while the speakers are presenting their cases. The clock continues for the speaker for the entire speech. Time will not stop until the speaker finishes their speech. Thank you for coming tonight. We hope that this debate will help clarify what is a complex public issue and help create a more open public discussion about future important issues in Cleveland. Affirmative case, you can begin your speech.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alina Starks, and again, I am the Ohio Political Director for the Working Families Party. WFP is a national political movement, building a party of the multiracial, multi-generational, and multi-gendered working class. We operate in many states throughout the country and recruit everyday people to run for office. We have thousands of endorsements up and down the ballot and a slew of people in Congress that identify with the WFP. Ohio WFP is proud to endorse issue 38, which we believe will be a big step forward for the city of Cleveland. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm so happy to see this crowd, so many friends, so many, we've got some family here, fellow organizers, showing up to get a deeper understanding of what's going on in our city. And also, I want to mention, when you walked in, you should have received a sample ballot. This is what you can expect the PB ballot to look like when issue 38 passes in November. I understand we all come into this space with different experiences and backgrounds, so let me share what has shaped my approach and grounds me in this work. I grew up spending lots of time in East Cleveland, in Cleveland, where my mother taught for 25 years. I remember dinner table talks where my mom would share that she had third graders selling drugs to support their families. In 2021, over 1,700 kids in CMSD were experiencing homelessness. Many years later, I carry the weight of her dinner table stories, hopeful to find solutions for our Cleveland children. My dad was such a hard worker that as a high school student at East Tech, he carried a briefcase every day. Such a nerd, but love you, Dad. He ended up graduating from Case in just three years, and he never let me forget it. But my dad, he knows the cost of living in a neighborhood without resources. He had to make a way out. The People's Budget Coalition, which spans over 30 local organizations who are trusted messengers in the community, like NAACP and Cleveland Votes, has talked to over 10,500 people, and it became clear that the people want a Cleveland where young people have options, elders feel safe, and neighborhoods where we all can thrive. I come into this space as an organizer who has seen many walks of life up close and personally. I've canvassed neighborhoods where young black men can tell me every single judge up for reelection but cannot name their councilperson. Over the last decade, I have committed myself to educating and advocating for our communities. I care deeply about the people of Cleveland, the city I call home. I choose Cleveland every day. Cleveland has a full, rich history of community, family, and culture that I am honored to grow. But tonight, it's hard not to feel like the folks that we voted for don't want to see the people win. But Cleveland deserves to win. Cleveland needs participatory budgeting to continue a legacy of resilience and create systems that encourage equitable growth for us all. And I know y'all are with me, because just last month, over 60,000 voters came out to vote no on issue one. And if we remember, that was about each and every one of our voices having the opportunity to be heard. I'd also like to point out that our councilpeople supported our voices on a state level in August. But again, tonight feels a little bit different with council working so hard to spend our city resources on keeping us quiet. The August election was so refreshing, because it's clear that Cleveland is paying attention. Clevelanders recognize that issue one was an attack on the rights of the people, and defending our rights is worth showing up for. And if we look at the voter turnout over the years, Cleveland knows how to show up for what we believe in. Ward 1, the highest voting block on the east side, that's like your Lee, Harvard, Miles Neighborhoods, they came out in higher numbers for issue one than they did for the midterm elections. Clevelanders are highly capable and know what and who we are voting for. So let's not lose this momentum. We have really big problems in this city, and the only way we're going to solve these problems is bringing everyone to the table, and that includes the people. The way things are being done now are simply unproductive and do not serve the people of Cleveland. Issue 38 creates new options to solve old problems. It's time, and we deserve more. We should ask ourselves and keep asking council, do we want the community to be engaged and invested in the outcomes of our city? And if we do all that, why are we here tonight debating a petition that got so many signatures? Some could even say that more signatures than some folks got in their election. Why debate what has already made it to the ballot? I'm sure I can speak for the rest of the PB Coalition that we are happy to be here to share the truth with our neighbors about the vast capacity that this city can have when we are not silenced, belittled, or ignored. It seems that we can't escape the fact that some of the most influential forces inside of our local government are betting their success on maintaining the status quo when they should be betting on the working-class people of Cleveland, the same people that helped get most of them elected. Issue 38 is going to play a major role in closing the gap between City Hall and our neighborhoods. What created this gap? Gerrymandering, tax abatements, council appointments, and budgets that year after year prioritize building stadiums and luxury developments over building power in working-class communities. When we vote yes on issue 38, it's a pledge to be bold in how we distribute power and wealth in our city. This road to deeper democracy, healthy communities, safe neighborhoods, and a future we can all be proud of starts with voting yes on issue 38 in November.
As a reminder, it's a good thing I'm a teacher. Remember that applause in the audience during the speech, the speaker is just going to continue going. It doesn't, time does not stop. Negation.
Carrie, thank you, Alina, so much. Hello, thank you so much for coming out to this very important discussion about a public policy proposal called participatory budgeting. I know it's a mouthful. My name is Robin Kaltenbach. I'm a proud resident of the great city of Cleveland. Furthermore, I'm committed to thinking critically and making informed decisions. Today, I'm going to negate the resolution. The harms of participatory budgeting here in PB far outweigh the benefits. I have four contentions to demonstrate why you, like me, should vote no on issue 38 in November. To fit this into six minutes, I'm going to speak a little bit fast, but here are four broad contentions. Feel free to take some notes. Number one, PB simply does not work. It's a failed idea. Number two, PB is far too expensive. Three, PB would be the most corrupt program in Cleveland history. And four, PB is bad for small-d democracy. There's a reason that the mayor, every member of city council, every single union in the city, and frankly, anyone who's ever worked in municipal finance is opposed to PB. That reason is PB is a bad idea. My first contention is PB does not work to increase citizen involvement. Let me explain further. Across the board, cities that adopt PB see less than a 5% participation rate on those elections. In Chicago's Ward 49 last year, with a population over 55,000, only 548 people took part in the PB elections. That's less than 1%, and it was in their 12th year of PB voting. The fact is, people don't care about this any more than they do real elections and actually participate at a stunningly lower rate. Two, PB is not associated with any increases in general election turnout either. As a tool to increase civic engagement, it fails everywhere it is tried. C, PB is regularly abandoned by cities after a few years. We actually found more cities that used to do PB than are actually doing it. In a Brennan Center for Justice report in 2022, half the cities they surveyed have already ended the practice. Cleveland is too broad, diverse, and unique for all communities to be hurt. PB cannot realistically solve all our problems by segmenting people into interest groups for unique funding. By failing to meet all the needs, PB becomes just another special interest for the well-connected. Our second contention is PB is too expensive. Again, let me explain further. Cleveland is routinely considered the second poorest city in America. We just passed a structurally balanced budget for the first time this century. Quite frankly, we can't take a $14 million pay cut when they provide no revenue for this project, and it becomes an unfunded mandate and stretches an already paper-thin budget. B, PB will cost people jobs. Cleveland employs about 6,000 people, and there's no way to realistically siphon $14 million from the budget every year without cutting payroll. This means a loss of service to taxpaying residents. C, union workers will have a weakened bargaining position if PB is adopted. City Hall has 31 unique labor contracts. It will be harder to negotiate for their members if the city suddenly loses 2% of its annual revenue every year. In a shocking display of how little they know about the city's budget, PB organizers have said repeatedly that half of the $14 million can come from the capital budget. Unbeknownst to them, there is no such thing. The city sells bonds to pay for capital improvement. There's not a pot of money called the capital budget that they can just dip into. If that were bonded every year, the debt alone would be $6 million, making the whole project about $20 million a year. Our third contention on why you should vote no on issue 38 is that PB will open the floodgates to corruption like Cleveland has never seen. With $14 million on the table and no oversight, it will be open season for shady actors looking for an easy buck. Here are the sum of the problems this will cause. A, the Board of Elections cannot be involved. They simply don't have voter files for people under the age of 18, meaning this will not be a state-sanctioned election and voter intimidation. Bribery and electioneering laws are not enforceable for the PB vote. PB cannot demand ID verification for a resident's age, address, or even the number of times they're voting. They have no legal authority to compel identification from anyone and will not be able to prevent ballot stuffing. C, PB cannot guarantee a private ballot. In the charter language they wrote, they specifically require all meetings be conducted under Ohio Open Meeting Laws, aka the Sunshine Laws, which means that all votes have to be counted in public. D, online voting is just not secure. According to an NPR report earlier this month, every election security expert agrees that we should not have lots of people voting over the internet. There's more agreement on this point than almost anything else in election security. Our last contention, contention four, is that PB is actually bad for small-d democracy. It will backfire and further suppress civic engagement and turnout in local elections. A, PB pits neighbor against neighbor on their own ideas. They will have to fight each other over passion projects. There will be hurt feelings as a result. B, PB violates one person, one vote. Personally, I don't have the discretionary time or income that would afford me the luxury of partaking in participatory budgeting, and I'm confident the same is true for the many Clevelanders working two jobs and raising families. PB gives a privileged class of voters, and empirically, we know this is a small group of connected individuals, the power to decide, not regular people like you and me. Residents who don't have time for the process will be relegated to secondary status by those who can afford the luxury of participatory budgeting. C, the essential message of PB is that representative democracy doesn't work. They are simultaneously trying to tell voters that our democratic institutions have failed because they can't trust elected officials while telling the press that they want more voters. If democracy is faltered, it's faltered, not just the outcomes they don't like. D, PB will never represent a majority of Cleveland. They gathered signatures from 1.7% of the population and spent over $3 per signature to do that. The low turnout ballot they decry is the one they are trying to win. The truth is, ideologically, the goal of PB to reach people whose needs are unmet is important to me on a personal level. I am committed to working towards a society that prioritizes social justice built on real change rather than empty promises and a false narrative. Having done my homework, I'm here to assert that the way PB is being proposed in our great city is flawed, doomed to fail, will reach some people at the expense of others, and will further fragment our struggling community. If you agree with any of the reasons I just outlined, just one of them, then you must
Nick, may I ask the first question?
Sure. Oh, you want me to, okay. You ready?
Who was?
Oh, Nick.
Yeah.
Okay. So my first question is, how do you run an election for 13-year-olds?
Well, we run the election for 13-year-olds by bringing in, well, first of all, this has been done through, out, many cities throughout the country, and I'm sure that Cleveland can figure it out, just as other cities have. So let's start there. We shouldn't be focused on a scarcity mindset. But we can do that by having their parents sign off or having it done at schools. There are lots of options to, that other cities have made it very successfully to include all folks into this election process. So Robin, you live in a neighborhood with a rich history of a building community around Old Brooklyn, so building community, strong block clubs, and neighborly support. Why do you think that your neighbors aren't smart enough to decide how to spend public money in their own neighborhood?
So, Alina, that's an interesting question, and the irony is, is that I live on an incredibly diverse street. If I were to take $20 and go to every single solitary door and say, here's $20, go to Walmart, get whatever you want, I guarantee that every household will walk out with a different product. And the reason is, is because our uniqueness, our diversity, means that we all have very special decisions that we make for our own lives. And the reality is, is that that's why we elect officials who can make those decisions on behalf of the diverse communities that they know so well. Okay, so going back to the election, 14, I mentioned that Old Brooklyn is a very diverse community. Cleveland is diverse. 14.7% of our residents don't speak English as their first language. Will you have for the election interpreters that have, or ballots that are translated into the diverse languages, Arabic, Spanish, Chinese, Albanian, so on and so forth? Will you have audio ballots? Will you walk every high-rise in the city of Cleveland to ensure that the residents who can't get to a polling location have the equal access of voting?
Yes, because the people need this. So Chris Harsh calls People's Budget Cleveland "the privileged people's budget" and claims that people don't have time for this nonsense, and you seem to have the same opinion. The only people, and he also says, the only people that can spend time on this are people that have the luxury of free time. And this is pretty clear race-baiting. Harsh wants low-income black people to believe that there's no way that issue 38 could benefit them. Do you think that Chris Harsh understands how it feels to be a low-income black person in Cleveland and can speak for them?
You know, I can't speak to what actually somebody else knows. But if you feel that $14 million is necessary in order to create the reform that you're looking for, why were you willing to introduce $5 million to start with? And then, very recently, earlier this month, were you willing to compromise at another $5 million if it indeed does take $14 million for that social reform?
Yeah, well, we actually started off with $30 million. So in council, there were councilpeople, and the mayor was supportive of that, actually. That didn't work out, so we brought it to the ballot, and yes, we wanted to work with city council. Unfortunately, they did not want to work with us. And also, as far as the money is concerned, two major reasons initiatives are believed to stagnate are the, is because the municipality does not provide, one, dedicated staff, and two, there is little to no funding to dedicated outreach and promotion.
30 seconds.
So we need that $14 million, if not more, to make sure this issue 38 can actually succeed.
That's awesome. So if you spent $3 per person to get 1.7% of the population out to vote, how much will it actually cost to get, as our statistics have proven, a couple hundred extra voters out to the ballots? How much do you think it would cost to staff those polling stations, to translate those ballots, and to really reach the diverse community we live in?
We skipped my question.
You may answer the question.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
What's that? We skipped my question.
Oh, she didn't, you didn't get your chance to answer your second one?
Yeah, so...
Yeah. Do you want to answer this one, and then I'll let you ask a question?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Did you know that the...
She can, she skipped her question.
Did you know that the Brennan report that our councilperson here loves to bring up is actually a very, is focused on a specific group of people, groups and cities, to compare and contrast what works well and what doesn't work well? Do you know that?
Yes, I am aware of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Last Saturday, I was at my church, Elizabeth Baptist, in Hyacinth Neighborhood of Slavic Village. I was with my friend Rhonda at the block party that she and I organize with some other neighbors every year. It was a beautiful day. Recess Cleveland was there. They had bouncy houses and big speakers playing beeped-out 90s hip-hop. Dozens of kids and families from the neighborhood were there. This year felt different, though, because just five days earlier, Rhonda, who's a black woman in her 60s and one of the kindest, funniest people that I know, she had a diabetic episode. Her daughter found her at home unresponsive. When Rhonda came to at the hospital, in classic Rhonda fashion, she texted our group to apologize for not putting up more flyers for the block party. I thank God that Rhonda's okay, not only because she's my friend, but because she is the grandmother of the neighborhood. She watches out for the kids down the street. She's checking in on her neighbors, and she's so committed to that work that even though she needed to use her roll later to cross the street on Saturday, she still claimed to the block party and gave us all big hugs. Rhonda works hard every day to build the city that she doesn't have but that she deserves, the city she thinks her children and her grandchildren deserve. And I think everyone in this room knows a Rhonda, someone working every day to make this city better, someone who's earned the trust of their neighbors because they show up and they love on them. I joined People's Budget Cleveland because of people like Rhonda. I think I've always felt at home with Rhonda, because I grew up in the church where my dad was a pastor, and I saw the care and wisdom throughout that community. And I know that in Cleveland, we need a lot more of that. Issue 38 amplifies Rhonda's work. It validates Rhonda's work. It invites the wisdom and creativity of people like Rhonda all over this city who do the work day in and day out to keep our city together. Issue 38 unlocks that knowledge and that energy so that we can make progress on solving old problems in a new way. So I'm here tonight to ask you to vote yes on issue 38. I'm glad we can be here to have this debate tonight. My thanks to Carrie for moderating and to Councilman Harsh for suggesting this. I agree that there is more to say on this topic than can fit on Twitter. Outside of the Thanksgiving table, this is my first-ever debate, so for those of you joining in person and watching on TV20, just know that every time I get flushed red in the face, that's all part of the strategy. So how did we get here? For two years, People's Budget Cleveland was talking with thousands of residents and trying to work with city council to start PB in Cleveland. In January of '23, Mayor Bibb introduced legislation co-sponsored by four members of council, Spencer, House, Gray, and Moore, to pilot PB with 5.5 million of federal money. At the Finance Committee meeting, all but one of the men on council, sitting in big chairs at a long wooden table, spent three hours telling our team why they disliked this idea so much. And let's be clear, it wasn't about the money. Our city had $512 million, and our proposal, which the mayor endorsed, asked for less than 1%. No, city council opposed this on principle. They don't want to share power with residents. They don't think that residents deserve, deserve to have power to make decisions about how taxpayers, how taxpayer money gets spent in their neighborhoods. We learned a lesson that day, and that lesson is that some members of council are more concerned with defending the status quo than with revitalizing democracy. Tonight, the opposition is going to share a bunch of reasons why they don't like this idea, and as they do, keep one thing in mind: Their job tonight is to defend the status quo. They want you to believe that this is as good as it gets. They want you to believe that it's okay that Rhonda's ability to make decisions that impact this city is limited to her voting once every four years, and that every other decision that impacts her life in this city should not live with her but should live with 17 people in City Hall. And I'm here to tell you that that is backwards. Residents are the experts in their neighborhoods. Residents are what keep this city going, and every day, all over this city, residents are fighting for a bigger vision of what our city should be. Issue 38 invites the wisdom, the creativity, and the courage of residents like Rhonda to address the issues that matter most to them. In issue 38, residents of Cleveland have a chance to stand up and tell status quo institutions that our budget is a moral document and that it's morally corrupt to pass budget after budget that pads the profits of billionaires when there is so much need in our city. PB Cleveland is fighting for a city that invests in people like Rhonda, not the Haslams, that puts people over politicians, that puts streets over stadiums. If there is money in our budget to pad the profits of billionaires, there is money in our budget to meet the needs of residents. It's time we take care of our own. That starts with voting yes on issue 38.
Ready?
Yep.
All right. We'll begin. Friends, welcome, and let me start by thanking you for coming down here tonight. I really appreciate you being here. I'm going to group all their arguments into two big categories, because this is their entire case. The city has problems and democracy is good. So let me grant the first point. It's an emotional appeal, but it's true. Bad things happen in this city and across this country and in this world. The world's never been perfect, and it likely never will be. There is injustice in the world, but God gave us hearts and brains, and we're obligated to use both. So let's talk about their solution, more democracy. They contend that they will usher in a new era of civic engagement and democratic growth for Cleveland. They will not. So my sole piece of evidence is the Charter Amendment that they're asking you to vote for. That's what we're here to debate tonight. So let's get into it. Section 2043-F is the most important single line in this proposal. It reads, "In..." world, but God gave us hearts and brains, and we're obligated to use both. So let's talk about their solution, more democracy. They contend that they will usher in a new era of civic engagement and democratic growth for Cleveland. They will not. So my sole piece of evidence is the Charter Amendment that they're asking you to vote for. That's what we're here to debate tonight. So let's get into it. Section 204.3F is the most important single line in this proposal. It reads, in its entirety, "The committee will oversee the PB fund." That's the first and last mention of financial control. The people do not control this money. The steering committee does. We cannot forget that. Section 204.3G says the committee will create a voting process, then count and certify the votes. But how do you certify a 13-year-old? You can't, and it doesn't matter because the committee oversees all the money. Section 204.3I says they'll adhere to open meeting laws, which means they must count those votes in public, which obliterates a secret ballot. And so that means everybody can know how everyone votes. And before you think that leaves a transparency, turn your eyes to Section 204.6D, which says contracts for winning projects are exempt from approval by city council and mayor. This means that the committee of 10 part-time people as young as 16 and one full-time staffer are going to be the ones writing the contracts. Remember, the committee oversees the fund, so they have complete control over who they write contracts for. They can decertify ideas or votes however they want. And then you say, "Yeah, but look, Chris, there's an election process to pick the projects." But there is no mandate to pick the winning projects from a popular vote. I'm going to come back to this because first, we have to talk about all the money that they're going to spend before anything is even left for you to vote on. Section 204.3C requires them to print and publish a new rule for this new process for all of Cleveland. That's a hefty contract they pay for out of the $14 million. Section 204.3E requires a formal evaluator with no restriction on costs, again, out of the $14 million. Section 204.3H requires a third-party contractor, actually as many as they want, to run the process, which we all know will be Cleveland votes and neighborhood progress because they put it on a slide deck back in January. We can expect that they'll be ready for their payday, but we don't know how much they're going to charge. It doesn't matter because the committee has complete control over the fund and all contracts. It can be any amount they want. By the way, all these are costs that are used before they even get to administrative fees, which is, Section 204.5C, and says the budget for administrative costs will be decided on by the committee. Period. They throw some numbers around, but they can actually make the admin costs whatever they want. It could be the entire $14 million. There are no restrictions. Section 204.5D.1A creates another $150,000 job in the mayor's office because it's real nice to work for the mayor in this town. Section 204.5D.1C gives 10 part-time committee members as young as 16, who only have to meet once a month at least $5,000, but as much as $10,000 a year or more. But my favorite part is 204.5D.1B, which creates another third-party outsourced job with no limit on salary. Again, this position could theoretically cost as much as they want. So after all the money is spent, after every one of the PB camp has been paid, in this six-page document, on page five and a half, we finally get around to democracy, or so we think. Section 204.6D, after exempting mayoral and council oversight, goes on to say that eligible projects voted on by residents must comply with all legal requirements. Notice that they say eligible projects, not winning projects. They can disqualify anything they want. There is no part of this charter that requires them to follow the will of the people or fund the election winners. They forgot to put that part in the charter they're asking you to vote for. But it gets even worse. Section 204.5S says, "On projects selected through the PB process, the city shall report to the committee every six months until the project is complete, and shall endeavor to fully implement each project within 18 months." That, my friends, endeavor, by the way, means try, is a boondoggle because there isn't even a mandate that projects be completed in a timely manner. They have to try to get it done in a year and a half and keep us posted. But what if the project never actually gets done? They don't use contracted language like "will complete in a timely manner" or "must complete." They just have to try. Cleveland can't wait for this committee of part-timers to try to contract out projects, try to get those done within a year or two, try to care about the people, reinvent democracy, or save our city. This is fool's gold, being shop the voters using historically marginalized as cover. This is not democracy. The only thing we know about this charter is that there will be $14 million at the disposal of the committee, and that's it. Lastly, last thing. Section 204.5A exempts them from Section 108 of the city charter. Sections 101 through 109 govern the chief finance officer.
30 seconds.
All nine were put in place back in 1931 to prevent corruption. They are exempting themselves from these reforms that have been in place for nearly a century. Friends, the reason that some politicians go to jail is because they break laws, laws that PB Cleveland does not want to be beholden to. But lest we forget, their entire case rests on emotional appeal. They hope that you're going to be so enraged, you'll vote for this disastrous handout to their friends. But that doesn't mean that I'm going to mortgage your future to make a handful of activists happy. The budget of Cleveland is trying to do a lot with very little, and we can't even do that if we're draining 2% of the annual general fund on salaries for people who don't actually provide services to the residents of Cleveland.
Affirmative. You get the first question?
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Harch, the committee that you refer to in the legislation, of course, is appointed by the mayor and by council. PB Clee has no role in appointing those people. PB Clee has no role on the committee.
Right. You actually give the mayor controlling interest over 2% of the budget, which could even be a violation of separation of powers.
The question I have for you, are you willing to commit to, one, issue 38 passes to seeing it through and implementing the charter as written, and, two, to appointing people to the committee who commit to doing the same?
The two things that are guaranteed in this charter is that we will put $14 million from the general fund in it, we will find 10 people, and the mayor will hire somebody. Those are the, that's actually what's mandated. Everything else is just up in the air. Because we have no idea. It's not written into the charter. You didn't detail the process. We have no idea what's going to happen. Can I ask a question?
Do you hear an answer to that?
Mr. Welly, did you write this charter?
No.
Okay, who did?
We wrote it as a committee with our lawyer.
This was group-sourced? Crowdfunded? This was, you wrote this as a collective?
Yes.
Did anybody in the administration help you with this?
Not with the text.
Anybody in city council?
Yeah. Thanks. Let's move on to the next question.
Sure.
So you've called Cleveland City Council one of the most progressive elected bodies in the country. Yet last month, the city council president used taxpayer money to send mail opposing Issue 38 to his constituents in Ward 6. Then, just eight days ago, he introduced legislation to retroactively cover his bases and quickly withdrew it when Cleveland residents rightly called him out on it. As an elected official, Councilman Harch, will you commit to opposing, using public money to campaign against resident-led ballot initiatives, even ones you don't agree with?
So the city of Cleveland has always been allowed to educate voters about issues affecting the city, and 38 very much affects the city, so we're allowed to talk about it. I also have a First Amendment right to free speech. I can tell you how I feel about things. The... And by the way, Mr. Welly, you said that we are trying to silence you, yet here we are to debate sponsored by city council with you onstage with us. Is it my turn?
Yeah.
Great. So did you consult anybody who works in municipal finance when you decided to draft this?
Yes.
And can I ask who you consulted?
No. I mean, I'd rather not share. Here's my question. Councilman Harch, a Republican state senator introduced a bill in Columbus that, like the August special election we just had, would take away the voice of the people of Cleveland, this time by preempting Issue 38. What are you personally willing to do to stand up and defend the rights of Clevelanders to make up their own minds around Issue 38?
Yeah. I'm actually hosting a public debate tonight so that people can vote on this issue in November. I have never heard of Jerry Sorino until it actually was reported in The Plain Dealer last Monday. But when you walk outside at midnight with pots and pans and bang them and dogs bark, don't act shocked. We've had this problem with the state legislature for decades. They've always been interfering in our affairs in the city.
Time.
And that is not a new issue for any of us.
Affirmative case for your summary.
The question that continues to come to mind is, what is Cleveland City Council scared of? The benefits of voting yes on Issue 38 and bringing participatory budgeting to Cleveland outweigh the harms by a long shot. Other cities have been successful, and funny enough, in most cities, it was the council's idea. Cleveland, we are 15 years behind, and we need to move forward. Tonight, a lot of people are hearing the words "participatory budgeting" for the first time, and city council would like you to join them in their scarcity mindset and believe that jobs will be lost and nothing will improve. What they don't say is PB funds can be voted on to go to projects like parks, roads, or payroll. These are city and union jobs that are still necessary to complete the projects. Councilpeople should not be using their time to scare us, threaten us, or use our tax dollars against us. Yes, the city may be strapped for cash, and that's exactly why the way it's led and how its money is spent must be changed. If we continue to do nothing, the budget will continue to decrease, and services will continue to be cut. There are immense amounts of wealth in Cleveland. They can find ways to pay for this. There's the casino funds, the money that we'll have after residents are done paying for the Browns stadium, to the $14 million that might go to escalators for the Cavs. This isn't about the money. This is about relationships with billionaires and developers and back-room deals that don't prioritize or protect the working residents of our city. PB funds would be $14 million spread over across 368,000 people, not just one billionaire, not just one stadium, and not just one neighborhood. That's over $508,000 more per councilperson in their budget, and only about $38 per Cleveland resident. Are Clevelanders not worth $38? Research finds that people who participate in PB are 8% more likely to vote in an upcoming election, municipal election. For people of color, that number grows to 20%. This is not just about the voters, though. The PB process includes everyone. It can get everyone involved, young, undocumented, or even if you have a suspended license and you don't have the right to vote. Issue 38 gives Clevelanders the opportunity to reimagine our city with parks, mental health units, roads that don't destroy our cars, public restrooms that you don't have to buy a coffee for, a living wage that makes honest work feel a little bit more worthwhile. There is more than enough for all of us, and Cleveland is owed much more than the scarce scraps. Issue 38 is about adding opportunities, not taking them away. The people of Cleveland have overwhelmingly supported Issue 38 with over 6,000 signatures that got it on the ballot. So in November, vote yes on Issue 38.
You want to take prep? Okay. The neg has requested prep time. When you're ready?
It is very clear today that there is a lot of emotions around participatory budgeting in Cleveland. And what we've been asked to do today is, for the first time, provide both sides in one forum to allow you the opportunity to hear both sides of the debate rather than a single-sided rhetoric based on emotions. We have been, like I said, asked to weigh the benefits of PB against the harms. Long story short, tangible harms always outweigh intangible benefits, and we've been uncontested here today in all of the points that we've brought up. PB ignores the root of the problems, and organizers stand tall on their soapbox exclaiming false promises that cannot be delivered. Rather, we're being asked to take 2% of the city budget when the ideas that they've provided for where that revenue can come from only came out today after asking for where that can come from. And I think the reality is that there's some confusion between budgeting and spending. Understanding what we will cut in order to achieve that $14 million that they're asking for is important. I have a friend whose street was paved, about half of it, a little bit over half. They had to drive down that road for almost a year with it unpaved because the city didn't have enough money, and it's not a super-long street. How many people do you know that live in communities that are built on the working class, that are members of unions that will no longer have an opportunity to get cost-of-living increases because we've taken $14 million out of the budget for other purposes? This is a $14 million experiment, and everything that the Brennan Center for Justice report was designed to do is to figure out why it's failing across the board. And I don't think that this is an experiment that the city of Cleveland is ready to adventure on. There are a lot of ways that we can work collaboratively to figure this out. Rather, they're talking about an 8% probability that it will increase turnout voting. That's not an increase of 8%. It means that they're likely, potentially, 8% more likely to come out to vote. However, those are among already-voting individuals. We've mentioned that it is far too expensive. There are very few instances where it succeeds, and when it does, cities abandon this within a couple of years because there's no sustainable way to do participatory budgeting in diverse communities such as Cleveland. If nothing more, I think that the conclusion that we can draw here is that we are not opposed to shifting money to the communities that need it, but the bill in front of us today, the Charter Amendment that we're being asked to vote on in November, is carelessly written with flaws that will open the door to corruption that you just cannot comprehend.
Time. This is a $14 million experiment, and everything that the Brennan Center for Justice report was designed to do is to figure out why it's failing across the board. And I don't think that this is an experiment that the city of Cleveland is ready to adventure on. There are a lot of ways that we can work collaboratively to figure this out. Rather, they're talking about an 8% probability that it will increase turnout voting. That's not an increase of 8%. It means that they're likely, potentially, 8% more likely to come out to vote. However, those are among already-voting individuals. We've mentioned that it is far too expensive. There are very few instances where it succeeds, and when it does, cities abandon this within a couple of years because there's no sustainable way to do participatory budgeting in diverse communities such as Cleveland. If nothing more, I think that the conclusion that we can draw here is that we are not opposed to shifting money to the communities that need it, but the bill in front of us today, the Charter Amendment that we're being asked to vote on in November, is carelessly written with flaws that will open the door to corruption that you just cannot comprehend. Time. Ready? Ready? Grand Crossfire? A reminder for the participants that you are, limit yourself to one question and allow for an answer, please. Okay, ready? Okay. This one, Neg has the first question.
So my question is, since you talk a lot about stadiums, does the city of Cleveland make any money off the stadium?
On net, no.
On net, okay. So there's no follow-up?
Okay. So in a Cleveland, or I'm sorry, in a city where we have a lot of appointed elected officials in our school board and in council, the only way to enter local politics is through ward clubs and city commissions. So the candidacy pool is very thin. Issue 38 provides a route for people to enter that pool by participating in the people's budget process. Where is council seeking to expand those pools, and how can they show those efforts have been working?
I've always been upset that we don't have an elected school board in Cleveland. Ever since it's gone under mayoral control, I thought it was a loss of democracy. And I think that actually, every time we shrink city council down, we have fewer options for residents to get diverse voice onto city council. So the number of opportunities we have for elections is controlled, you know, unfortunately, by people in the State House, who, again, you know, were just today trying to strike down this effort. And it's a problem that we have where we actually have less avenues to democracy. I completely agree with that. My question is, in Section 204.4B, why do you require age discrimination when you say the mayor and council shall prioritize the participation of residents under the age of 30? Why are we codifying age discrimination?
Yeah, this is referring to the structure of who's on the committee and how they get appointed there. And we found it very important to prioritize voices that are historically left out of the electoral process. That includes young folks and people of color. And that's why that language is in there. Here's a question. The city is currently negotiating with the billionaire owner of the Browns for a new stadium deal. The research is clear. Public subsidies to stadiums are a terrible investment for our city. As a member of council, Chris, you have an important role in this. You've put a tremendous amount of energy into opposing Issue 38. What will it take for you to put the same energy into rallying residents and elected officials into ensuring a stadium deal does not result in more handouts for billionaires? officials into ensuring a stadium deal does not result in more handouts for billionaires?
I am terribly interested. Sure. I am terribly interested in something called an equity interest. If the city of Cleveland actually profited from the Browns organization, so if the Browns were to come to us and say, "We want public funding for finance," and we said, "Cool, what share of profits do we get?" And we can do the math to find out that the profit from the team is actually greater than our investment, and we could invest taxpayer money that actually comes back in greater amounts, an equity interest in the Browns would be a radical change to all of the NFL. It would actually allow people to take back their teams because they're supposed to be for the city, and I'm very interested in having that conversation with anybody that wants to have it. My follow-up, though, my follow-up question is back to age discrimination. Do you really think that's legal to tell us that we must prioritize people under the age of 30 and we have no choice?
It's important to prioritize folks who've been traditionally left out of the process. Whether it's legal or not will have to be sorted out by lawyers.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
We brought participatory budgeting to the ballot because council was unsupportive. Yet council will be required to select half of the committee. How can you confirm that if issue 38 passes, you will choose a committee that, again, is for one, in favor of issue 38 and wants it to succeed and are committed to honoring Cleveland residents in a way that is responsible and ethical?
Yeah, I mean, there's not a lot of instruction in this charter. I'm really kind of like floored by how few directions there are. So, we'll find five people. Apparently, they all have to be under the age of 30 because prioritize means to put in order. So, apparently, we can't have anybody over the age of 30, so we'll find five people under the age of 30 that want to do this. They'll submit their applications, we'll go through it, and we'll pick five, and the mayor picks five, and then he hires someone. It's the one thing spelled out. It's the one thing that's actually spelled out. Oh, our question, sorry, go ahead.
Wait, oh, no, don't worry. Sorry. You're good.
So, I guess my question for you is, how do you prevent, let's say we have a great idea to, just as an example, pave Brook Park Road, and everybody in the city of Parma takes the identity of somebody in the city of Cleveland who is not part, how do you prevent ballot stuffing? How do you prevent this from happening to this when there's no way that you can require ID, legally cannot require ID from people on these ballots?
Yeah, there's a whole spectrum of options that we have available to us that other cities have used to make this happen. There are consultants who've done this in dozens of cities, and we can access that knowledge to find the right system that's going to work here. We're going to balance access and security. Access is as simple as folks self-attesting to where they live. That would be at one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum is security. That involves ID, that involves voter registration files, which are public information, and we can go anywhere along that spectrum that the committee decides makes the most sense and works the best for Cleveland.
Time. Affirmative as requested prep time? Ready? Or, of prep time? Or, uh, or?
Thanks for your patience. When I had a chance to ask my friend Rhonda if I could use her story today, she paused for a second, and then she said, "It would be an honor." And I think that reflects the tremendous amount of energy that our coalition has found for this question as we've talked with people all across the city. The most popular question we got when collecting 10,500 signatures across Cleveland, when we described this ballot initiative, was we said 2% of the city's budget in the hands of residents. And folks paused, and they said, "Why just 2%?" Folks want to see even more power in the hands of residents. And that's what this conversation is really about. This conversation is really about power, about who has power to make decisions about how public money gets spent in our city. People's Budget Cleveland believes residents deserve power to make real decisions about how taxpayer money gets spent. That's why after two years of organizing, PB Clee launched issue 38 to enable Cleveland residents to make those decisions about how 2% of the city's budget gets spent. It is already your money. You should have a say in how it gets spent. And at its heart, issue 38 is about hope. It is about hope that we can live in a city where residents feel respected and where they have their needs met. It's about hope for an effective and powerful, unionized city government that responds to the needs of its residents. It's about hope for public officials who see their jobs not as gatekeepers but as facilitators building leadership and connecting people with what they need. I want to make a quick note about finances, which is on our Instagram, you can see a new presentation that describes some of the many paths available to the city to fund PB without making any cuts to essential services. Unfortunately, what you haven't heard from the opposition is any message of hope. If you're leaving tonight in the way I am, you do not hear from the opposition much reason to feel hopeful. That's because their message is not to aspire for greatness, but to accept mediocrity. To stick with the status quo. They want you to vote no on issue 38 and foreclose the possibility of substantial change, of the idea that my friend Rhonda has a vote outside of once every four years. Instead, they want to double down and let city council do its thing as it exists today. Let's be clear about the status quo. In 2021, the municipal elections, four of five adults in Cleveland stayed home. According to a 21 survey by Policy Matters Ohio, nearly four in five residents do not trust local government to address issues important to them. People are burned out and turned off by the status quo, and it's no wonder that folks aren't voting and they don't feel trust in local government. It's time to turn a new page. It is time to put streets over stadiums, to put people over politicians, and that starts by voting yes on issue 38 in November. Thank you.
Ready? Okay, I'm going to start now. So, we've had a very emotional evening tonight. We've talked a lot about aspirations and hopes, and we've talked a lot about our struggles with injustice in the world. And I do actually want to tell you that when we sit down at the big table to talk about the issues, we often say that it's not personal. We often check our feelings at the door because there's 375,000 people in this city. We have to keep them all in mind, and people don't always have the same ideas. But since this is about seemingly council, let's talk about council. Richard Starr was born in Central, one of the lowest-income neighborhoods in all of Ohio. He studied, did what everyone said, went to college and got a degree, actually got a master's in business administration from BW. Then he went back to his neighborhood to work at the Boys and Girls Club to give back to the kids in his own community. At 32, he took another step to run for city council and was sworn in with me on January 3rd of last year. The next day, in the eyes of some, he became an enemy of the people, the good old boy and part of the machine. Last year, Councilman Starr was allocated $116,000 in casino funds, or slush money, as people like to call it. We all were. With that money, he was asked by residents to bury children from his community or put kids on a bus to go to school events because he could not pay for both. He was forced to prioritize the needs of grieving parents or the aspirations of children, and he has to choose because there's not enough money. There never will be enough money for everything. Earlier this year, Councilman Starr asked the administration for more equitable split of casino revenue by about $5 million, bringing us all up to $400,000. He was told at a meeting that that was absolutely not possible because the general fund could not shoulder a $5 million hit. An hour later, we walked to the other end of the hall where PB was at the table asking for $5.5 million. Not all at once. On that day, they just wanted $510,000 so that they could hire people to run this process. That was the ask. They wanted us to hold another $5 million off to the side so that they could spend it later. But it was always their plan to ask for general fund dollars. 75% of council said no. At that time, we were faced with black women looking to lower infant mortality rates, artists trying to recover from COVID, we're putting tens of millions into affordable housing, and we're leaving hundreds of millions in medical debt. In the face of real needs with specific asks, we could not justify a blank check for activists whose first-order business was securing their own paycheck. And paychecks, my friends, is what this has always been about. As we've detailed tonight, the PB supporters have written a six-page charter amendment that speaks about paychecks and salaries for the first five and a half pages before ever spending a dollar on the people on the last page, and God only knows what's going to be left by then. We've also demonstrated in detail that they cannot prevent these funds from being misused, abused, or corrupted. PB walked into city hall, quite frankly, with a hand grenade and acted shocked when city council insisted on protecting the people who elected us. We all believe in democracy, and that's why we run for office, to give more back to the communities we love, but democracy is not easy, and it never will be. There will always be conflict. Democracy, friends, requires maturity and the grace to accept that none of us will always get everything we want. I wouldn't be here tonight if I didn't think democracy was worth fighting for, and I would not have run for office if I didn't think there was more to do. But this proposal has not been about the people. It's about the proponents who are riding the backs of those people so that they can secure something for themselves. All in service to the idea that we have proven does not work. 5% turnout is not success. It doesn't work. It's at the cost that Cleveland can't afford, and it's the type of fraud that we swore an oath to prevent. That's why council is united against this. That's why the mayor, his administration, every single union in Cleveland, countless groups of pastors and others are against this. City charters aren't toys. This is not legislation we can fix later. If passed, this becomes a requirement, and all I can tell you is that we will put the money in the fund, we'll find 11 people to oversee it, but we will have no influence, and neither will you. Charters aren't toys. This is a measure twice and cut once scenario. So, if you have any doubt in your mind that this won't work,
Thirty seconds.
Will cost too much or have unintended consequences, you must vote no on issue 38 in November. You must, like us, negate this resolution. The harms of PB far outweigh the benefits. But lastly, thank you. Thank you for coming out here tonight. I hope this debate becomes a regular feature. We can do for different people, perhaps on stadium funding next year. Democracy is well-served by communication, and I want to thank our moderator, Carrie Kofler, my partner, Robyn Keltenbach, and my noble opponents. Please give them all a round of applause.